Good evening, everybody. We'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the King George County Board of Supervisors. We would like to start off, if we could all rise, with an invocation by Mrs. Binder and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please bow your heads. Please, Lord, help us make the right decisions for all residents of the county of King George, be they young and old, and to understand that everybody has differences of opinion, but we all want to do the right thing for every person who lives in King George. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the light of the day of America and to the republic, which stands one nation, unanimous, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Mr. Miller, any amendments to the agenda tonight?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now I will open the floor up to public comment. Public comment will be limited to three minutes per person in order to afford everyone an opportunity to speak. If comments relate to a specific public hearing, we may ask that you offer those comments at the time of the public hearing. I do have a sign-up sheet right here, and I will go down the sign-up sheet first, and anybody that shows up or would like to speak afterwards, you will get an opportunity. Ms. Parker.
Renee Parker, 7144 Peppermore Road. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm here tonight to ask you to work deliberately to ensure the well-being and growth of our public school system and all those who work and learn there. It seems for decades this board has viewed the school system and the fact that approximately 55% of your budget is devoted to it with annoyance. I say this because it's common for county supervisors to dread the receipt of the school budget, and that's because the board has no new significant revenue streams on the immediate horizon. Because the schools have been made to feel as if they are the albatross around your necks, they approach with caution and may not ask for all they actually need. Both outlooks impede progress and breed negativity. Neither of your boards should feel the way they appear to feel, because this is real life. You only have the revenue you have, therefore you have no choice but to raise taxes to accommodate the need. The schools should be able to approach this board, knowing they are being trusted to put forward what's needed for recruitment and retention of highly qualified educators and a rigorous academic program for all students. Compared to counties with comparable wealth, school attendance, real estate property values, and taxable retail sales, King George County Schools continues to reside with the lowest of the ranks, currently the lowest, in the state of Virginia for per pupil funding. I suggest to you that this board and boards before you inherited a defensive stance about that information and the school budget in general. I ask that you reflect on that, and rather than perpetuate that stance by being annoyed that these statistics exist or that people are aware of the statistics, I implore you to focus on the approximately 5,105 human beings that are directly affected by these statistics. If you have not noticed the numbers of educators leaving the field of education over the past decade, not just during COVID, then you haven't been looking. They leave due to low salaries, ever-changing state and federal requirements, national and local politics, and the fact that they are simply not respected and compensated appropriately. Whether or not your board understands the complexity of the school's budget or agrees with the need, the reality is that our school system has been underfunded for years and the county continues to grow in population. If the addition of new, significant streams of revenue is not on the horizon, then you must raise taxes to ensure the well-being and growth of the human beings that make up our public school system. Not only is a healthy and robust school system highly desirable to organizations looking for a home, the benefit that approximately 4,405 highly educated individuals brings to King George County is immeasurable. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Parker. Ms. Strauss.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the Board of Supervisors and all those present. My name is Dee Strauss. I live at 10362 Ridgeway Drive in King George. I'm also a marketing teacher at King George High School, the CTE Department Chair, and DECA Advisor. This is my 22nd year as a teacher, all in King George. As my sister sent to me today for teacher appreciation, "What a great calling you have on your life." I could not agree more. Teaching is a true calling. Those of us in education today have been through just over two years of something none of us ever imagined, and many of us have continued on. Many of us want to continue on. We continue on for our schoolchildren. We continue on for our community. Our superintendent, along with staff, has developed and presented to you a needs-based budget for the coming school year. I have listened to this board's discussion from the last meeting about the school budget, and I would like to offer the following. We may not have the final numbers from the state for funding, but this board can and should be sure to completely support the request from the superintendent and fully fund the school budget for 2022, 2023, showing support for students by an increase in per pupil investment and showing support for staff by ensuring step and pay increases along with additional positions needed to instruct and support our county's children. On another note, as a resident, I have tried to call VDOT today but could not get through. Can anyone tell me why or find out why there is a traffic counter on my road, Ridgeway Drive? This is not a through road. This is not, there is no outlet to this road, and my house is at the end of the state maintained. It is a seven-tenths-of-a-mile-long road. I can probably tell you the traffic count on that road at any given day, weekday or weekend. Why would this data need to be collected? Thank you for your time this evening, and thank you for all you do for our county.
Thank you, Ms. Strauss. Jin-Sung Bay.
My name is Jin-Sung Bay. I am originally from South Korea, and now I'm an American living in Fairfax County. Today is from today will be the 30th anniversary of the public introduction of Falun Dafa, which is also called Falun Gong. It is a spiritual practice that teaches gentle exercise, meditation, and the principles of truthfulness, compassion, and tolerance. It was introduced in China in 1992 and here in Virginia in 1996. Falun Dafa has benefited the holistic health of more than 100 million people. May is also Asian-Pacific-American Heritage Month. We respectfully suggest that this would be a wonderful opportunity for King George's to issue a proclamation in honor of World Falun Dafa Day, May 13, or Falun Dafa Month. There are many shared values between Falun Dafa and the traditional American culture: the importance of virtue as the foundation of peace and social order; the importance of freedom, especially religious freedom; fund faith in divine providence. Communism opposes freedom, faith, and morality, and so the Chinese Communist Party, CCP, outrode Falun Dafa in 1999. The Chinese regime has been persecuting Falun Dafa practitioners for the past 23 years. The U.S. State Department and the United Nations even say there are credible reports that the CCP has been killing prisoners of conscience, most of them Falun Dafa practitioners, in order to sell their organs for transplant. We hope you can express your support for our shared values by issuing a proclamation for World Falun Dafa Day. Thank you very much.
Next up, Tiny Tang.
My name is Tiny Tang. I'm originally from China, and I'm now a U.S. citizen living in Fairfax County. I want to continue Jin-Sung's comments. My mother in China was arrested six times and was forced to appear on TV to criticize Falun Gong against her will. She couldn't get her passport as a citizen. Local police searched my family without any permission and took the money. There are many survivors of the persecution of Falun Gong who live here in Virginia, then spent up to seven years in prison for telling people about Falun Gong. They were forced slave labor for long hours. They were blood tested, which is one of the tests used to determine the compatibility of organs for a transplantation transplant. The practice of organ harvesting in China has been underreported in the U.S. media. Fortunately, our Virginia has been extremely supportive of Falun Dafa in recent years. In February, the Virginia House of Delegates adopted a resolution, HR 9, to condemn the Chinese regime's persecution of Falun Gong and the practice of harvesting organs from prisoners of conscience. And since 2021, 25 counties, towns, and cities throughout Virginia, including Westmoreland, Caroline, Spazovania, passed resolutions to educate their citizens about organ harvesting in China. This afternoon, we received another proclamation from Stanford County to show their support. We hope that King George County will consider issuing a proclamation in honor of World Falun Dafa Day. Last year, 100 local residents who signed petition likewise expressed their gratitude and support for our mission. Some local residents even learned Falun Gong from our volunteers after the meeting. At a moment in history when we are witnessing an emphasis on division and struggle, we hope that King George can honor a practice that teaches people to attain wellness through practicing the virtues of truthfulness, compassion, and forbearance. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, Susan Park.
My name is Susan Park, and I am the parent of two children who attend King George schools, and I'm asking the board to fully fund the school budget. Virginia currently ranks 41st in the nation for per pupil funding, and Virginia teacher salaries are 17% below the national average. Compared to 133 other Virginia counties with similar average daily membership and local composite indexes, King George ranks 128th or 6th lowest in per pupil investment. When compared with other schools in the same categories, King George ranks at the very bottom, and that is shocking. Each year that the school budget is underfunded, the following year's funding gap grows larger. Taking the past two years into consideration, the current year's budget is $1.2 million below where it should be. Why does fully funding school budgets matter? Because funding is directly tied to student achievement. Greater school funding means smaller class sizes, additional enrichment programs, and increased teacher compensation to hire high-quality professionals. Our teachers, staff, paras, custodians, bus drivers, and cafeteria workers are doing the best they can, but they're all feeling the effects of that chronic underfunding. There are many classes in our county right now that are not being taught by credentialed teachers but by long-term subs. Long-term subs in Virginia are not required to have any teaching credentials or even a college degree. They're doing their best, but they're not trained teachers and cannot provide the quality of education that a professional could. When neighboring localities are offering higher salaries and more resources, it's no surprise that we lose our high-performing teachers. Our children deserve better. They deserve to spend their days in buildings with roofs that don't leak when it rains. They deserve full-time teachers, credentialed teachers, and smaller classes led by professionals who are being paid a fair salary. They deserve more than the current budget provides, so I ask you to consider fully funding the King George County school budget.
Is it Bo Park? Bee Park?
My name is Bee Park. I'm a 7th grader at King George Middle School. I'm asking the Board of Supervisors to reconsider their decision and to fully fund our schools this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Yvonne Richard.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Yvonne Richard. I'm a resident of Cedar Lane, King George, Virginia. I'm here to request that you fully fund the school board budget as presented by Dr. Benson and the school board. I think it is unfair of you to tell the citizens of this community that you aren't cutting the budget, but the board, the school board, controls the budget. As members of the Board of Supervisors, you control the school's budget by choosing not to fully fund the requested budget. During the 2021 school year, you cut the school's budget by $300,000. During the 2021-22 school year budget, the funding level, you did level funding from the previous school year. And while I understand this year you plan to increase the level of funding by $1.4 million, more than last year, you are still not fully funding the school budget. This budget is not a wish list of frivolous things. It is a budget based on the needs of our students and our staff. The budget will allow teachers and staff to get a cost of living increase and step increases based on years of experience. This allows King George to remain competitive with surrounding districts when trying to recruit and retain qualified teachers. The budget will cover textbooks, consumables, technology, and maintenance of our school facilities. The budget provides funding for federally mandated programs such as special education. And while some members of our community think that supplying teachers and students with a piece of chalk and chalkboard will be sufficient to prepare our students for the world outside of school, they are completely wrong. And if that is all that can be provided for our students, then our students will be completely unprepared for the world in which we live. Additionally, anyone who's been shopping recently knows that the cost of things has increased greatly over the last few years. That also means that the cost of materials purchased by the schools has also increased as well. So if we don't increase the budget to help cover this increase, our students actually end up with less than they had just one year ago. And unfortunately, many teachers will just end up having to spend more money out of their pocket to make up for the things that you are not funding. That's right, you, as a Board of Supervisors, will force the teachers to spend more money so that we can fund our students. And as a parent of children attending King George Public Schools, it's embarrassing to hear that the King George County Schools ranks 128th, the 6th lowest in the state, per pupil investment, at $9,992, while the state is averaging $12,247. Is that really how you want King George to be known? As a resident of King George County, I understand that my taxes may increase if you fully fund the school budget. But I also understand that if you don't fully fund the budget to keep our taxes and try to keep taxes low, I'll most likely end up spending that money to buy materials for my classroom anyway. Again, I urge you to please fully fund the school budget. Thank you.
Next, Jeannie Mab.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Jeannie Mab, and I moved to Hopyard Farms about two years ago. I am a retired educator, administrator, and crisis counselor in five schools, four of which were Title I schools. More importantly, I have two children at Sealeston Elementary School. From my experience, budget cuts have led to disastrous school year, disastrous school year compounded budgets for several years thereafter. In my experience, in 2018, in the school district from which I moved, we had an amazing surge of migrant and new housing students that came to the school. There were so many students that at one of the high schools, they had hundreds of students sitting on bleachers in the gym with no teachers or classroom available to teach these students. This led to no books to teach students trickling down through the middle school and elementary schools. That led to increase in printing costs because we had to print off materials to try to have something to teach the students with. Then sadly, as we used up as much budget money as we had, there was a shortage of toilet paper. I myself had to cover classes as an administrator when I was actually a crisis counselor, which meant that if there was a crisis on campus, I could not adequately respond to a situation that was arising in a classroom or with a student who had threatened harm to themselves. This led to teachers leaving for neighboring counties for higher pay in the 2019-2020 school year. I have heard recently that that is already happening within this county. In 2019-2020, printing budget had to be reduced. Teacher pays were frozen, and this resulted in less materials for kids, program cuts for things such as after-school tutoring, home visits by social workers to help with students who were absentee, and there were even more teacher exits, yielding in oversized classrooms, and then having to pay the state fines for having oversized classrooms. My point is that we have about three new housing areas under development, with others likely underway. Budget shortages will continue to roll over and impact students and teachers for years to come. Pre-planning now sets up our students and our county for success. Where I was raised, I was taught that we should always vote for villages for schools and safety, that taxes for schools and safety were always paramount. The health and strength of our schools is a direct reflection of the health and strength of our community, and we always strive to be one of the shining best communities that we can live in. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next up, Donna Zwicker.
Good evening, members of the board. I'm Donna Zwicker, and I've lived in this community for about 15 years, and I've had the pleasure of teaching the children of this community, some of your children. And I am here just to say simply, I come from the front line. We need your support. We need you to fully fund the budget. I know Dr. Benson goes to a lot of trouble to develop a needs-based budget, and from the front line, I will tell you, we do spend a lot of our own money, and we do whatever we can to service the children of this community. So we just ask you to give what you can to our school. We need your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Terry Rinco.
Good evening, Chairman Stonehill and fellow supervisors. Thank you for all of your service to King George County. My name is Terry Rinco, resident of Williams Court. I am the president of the King George County Council of PTAs and a member of the King George Career and Technical Education Advisory Committee. I come before you today to ask you to fully fund the KGCS budget. Louisa County Schools is a rural school division in the region, similar to ours in several ways. Louisa County Schools has one high school like us, one middle school, and four elementary instead of three. Louisa High has 1,500 students, just 34 more students than King George High. Louisa has active parent-teacher associations, as does King George. We are seeing in King George an extraordinarily high level of parent interest and engagement this school year. Parents, not teachers, have filled all the slots on all of the PTA boards for next year, and Sealeston chartered its own brand-new PTA. I come before you tonight to pose a question. What does Louisa County Schools have that King George Schools does not? Well, for one, Louisa County Schools has five more counseling positions, including three more school psychologists. It has 22 more special education teachers than King George County Schools. Louisa County Schools has added a best practices work-based learning division to its CTE program in just the past five years. In 2021, that program employed and/or placed students in over 100 different work-based experiences, such as hand-on internships, job shadowing, and apprenticeships with area employers. KGCS, in contrast, in its third year waiting for its budgeted CTE position to be funded after touring Louisa's program. Currently, 59% to 69% of King George High School seniors enter the world directly after high school. 100% of our kids deserve to leave with a more defined plan. With higher available revenue this year, improved parental involvement, employers hungry for assistance, and an inspired, need-based school budget, the perfect storm is brewing to enable King George County Schools to transform its level of student services and how it delivers quality education. So what does Louisa County Schools have on King George? Nothing but more money invested by their supervisors to meet or exceed its county's local contribution calculated by the state. Louisa certainly can't beat our amazing people. I respectfully ask you to have a touch more faith in our special little school system and allow yourself to join us in dreaming of what can be. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Carrie Gonzalez, and my address is 8116 Oakcrest Drive. I come this evening to ask you to reconsider your decision to underfund King George County Schools for the third year in row. We hear a lot about the competing priorities in this county and how the needs are so great that we cannot afford to fund them all, but as the officials elected to run this county, it is your job to ensure that there's enough revenue to provide adequate services to your constituents. And if that means raising taxes, that means raising taxes. You were elected to make hard decisions, and so I challenge you to make them. Keeping taxes low, or lowering them, as the case may be, is an easy decision because few people will come to ask you to raise taxes. For years, I've heard about talk about strategic and smart growth in this county, which would bring additional revenue in the form of businesses, yet businesses seem reluctant to come here for a variety of reasons. We don't have enough people to support them, maybe, or maybe they don't want to pay the Astronomical Service Authority connection fees. Service Authority costs will only go down if the county continues investing in it, which can mean raising taxes, though it can also mean attracting more customers. Customers also come in the form of residents, and people do not want to move here if we do not have good schools, and we don't have good schools if a county won't invest in them. It was not all that long ago that our schools were not accredited. We will be unaccredited again if we can't maintain SOQ standards and retain our teachers. It is a dangerous do-loop, and if you can't figure out a way to get more businesses here and get them to stay here, then the way out of it is to raise taxes and start providing this county with better services. I moved here 15 years ago, the ignorance of my youth not realizing that our taxes are artificially low because they are subsidized by the landfill and because we don't invest adequately in basic services like good public schools. I know that this board has worked diligently for years to improve the debt service, improve the service authority, and repair damages done to institutions in this county by boards of the past. I just heard in your service authority meeting that there is a lack of routine maintenance and shortage of adequate staff. When I encourage you to raise taxes, it is not just for the schools, as some of you believe, but it is for all of the services in this county. I have a well and a septic on my property, thank goodness, might I add, but I will gladly pay more taxes to help improve the service authority, and I know for a fact that others will as well. Without additional revenue streams, you must rely on taxes. Not that long ago, this board raised taxes considerably to make teacher pay competitive. That could have been the start of a really awesome positive trend, but instead we are regressing. If you don't invest adequately in our schools, our classrooms will become overcrowded, our teachers will leave, or students will drop out. Funding the other county departments will become a moot point when there are no qualified graduates to fill these positions. Our crime rates will go up, the fire department will be able to service fewer calls, Heritage Hall will have fewer trained nurses and staff. This county will pay higher and higher fees for a service authority that is not up to current standards. The majority of you have children in this county and in our schools. Is that the future you want for your children? Is that the future you want for this county when you become elderly yourselves with inadequate public services, not enough ambulance drivers to get you to the hospital when you have a heart attack? It is all connected. I implore you to fully fund the King George County Schools this year, and as I mentioned, it's all connected, and it starts with you, our elected officials, who have the power to make the difference. So please, fund our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Kimber Green.
Hello, my name is Kimber Green. I'm the president of the Sealeston Elementary School PTA and a parent to two children that are going to be affected by your decision on the King George County school budget. I'm here today to implore you to reconsider the school budget. I greatly appreciate the time that you have spent in determining the funding amount. It, however, does not accurately reflect the actual needs. There are seven There are 754 students enrolled in Silston Elementary School, as well as 90 staff. It is easy to get lost in the numbers of a spreadsheet when determining a budget, but there are real people behind those numbers. That's 754 students, each with their own unique learning needs and challenges, and a mere 90 staff there to help them on their educational journey. Each staff member is passionate about helping students learn and grow. That's why they're at Silston, and that's what makes Silston such a special school. It takes more than heart, though. It takes funding. We need more staff and more resources. My youngest child will start school at Silston this fall, along with every child in her preschool class. The need for funding is going to grow as enrollment grows, and kindergarten registration has just begun. I am proud of our school. Silston is an amazing place to be, and King George is a wonderful place to live. I love working with the county council PTA and the presidents of all the King George Schools. Each school has its own unique personality and need. One thing we all need is a fully funded school budget. We all aim to be successful. It's hard to be so with limited means. I lived in Alabama when I was younger, and people used to laugh and joke and say, "Thank God for Mississippi," because Alabama ranked number 49 out of 50 states in most educational things, with Mississippi coming in last. No one wants to be last, and we certainly don't want anyone saying, "Thank God for King George," when it comes to this respect. It's embarrassing that out of 133 Virginia localities with similar student bodies, that we rank 128th, sixth lowest. We have the smallest investment in our pupils. King George students and teachers deserve more. They deserve a fully funded budget. I truly believe it's the little things in life that make a big difference. That's why I helped recharter the Silston Elementary School PTA. I love working with my amazing staff and seeing the effects that it has on the students and staff. There truly is a buzz at the school these days. The PTA is more than just fundraising and fun events, however. We advocate for students and staff, and that's why I'm here today, to ask you to advocate for them as well and fully fund the school budget. I will leave you with this final thought. I often say, "Together, we can do great things," which is a wise saying from Mother Teresa. She also said, "None of us, including me, ever do great things." But we can do small things with great love, and together, we can do something wonderful. We each have a part to play in shaping the world. How will you shape the world for students and staff in King George County? Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Hannah Fallon.
Hi, I'm Hannah Fallon. This is my eighth year teaching at King George Middle School, and I just wanted to request that you guys fully fund the schools. Dr. Benson's budget, I read through it. I'm an art teacher. I'm not a mathematician. I know you guys are working really hard to do all the numbers, and I really appreciate that, but I would just like to really, really urge you that there's nothing frivolous in this budget. As a person in the schools, right now, we have a teacher shortage. It's all over the place. It's not just in King George, but we are being covered by long-term substitutes. I don't know what number, but it's a large percentage, larger than any other year that I've seen in the past, with long-term subs covering really important positions. And as was mentioned earlier, those long-term substitutes, they don't have the background, the education, the qualifications that our students really, really need. We need highly qualified educators and paraprofessionals supporting our students in the classroom. And we have students with more needs, like greater needs than I've experienced in the past. And they may have had autism, and those behaviors went unchecked at home. They didn't have to relate in a larger school environment, or they might have special education needs that went unidentified at home, such as reading deficits and learning deficits. And they're being identified as needing special education at the middle school level, which I don't remember students in the past needing that level of support and identification, even at the middle school level, because usually it happened at the elementary level prior to getting there. And I just wanted to really, really impress upon you that every position listed here and the needed positions are really, absolutely critical and important. Our paraprofessionals right now, we don't have enough. And paraprofessionals assist students one-on-one, but they also assist in the classrooms as well. And when those people aren't there, the students really don't get the support they need, and it just trickles down into everywhere. And you can see it in the hallways when students are unaccompanied that need accompaniment, or when students who are nonverbal or in a wheelchair, they need somebody right there with them, and they don't have those one-on-one supports. And these are the things that the budget is providing for. We've had teachers leaving the school, and as I mentioned, positions unfilled, which means that teachers during their planning time, instead of planning for the instruction that our student needs, we are going and covering for other teachers who are not there during our planning period. We're substituting for other people, which also steals away from our students the supports that they need. So if you could, please, 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 invest in our schools, our community, our children, and our future. Our schools with our children are our future. And so thank you so much for hearing me out.
Thank you. That's all I have on the sign-up sheet. Is there anyone else that would like to give public comment?
My name is Amy Carey. I live in Hopyard, and I have nothing prepared, which is probably not going to be very good because I'm not very good off the cusp. But I'll just say this. I've been teaching in this county for 15 years. I taught at Potomac Elementary, Silston Elementary, and now I'm at King George High. I've been to numerous supervisor meetings. I usually leave upset and angry. You've heard the same thing repeated over and over again from people imploring for you to meet the requested budget. I understand how this usually works, that you're waiting to see what the state provides. We are not a poor county. We're a fairly wealthy county. I'm really hoping that you can find a way to meet it. I know that you have a budget that you've got to meet for lots of different. You just had the meeting before this for the service authority. I also pay an enormous amount in water. I'd like that to stop, too. I live in Hopyard. My last bill was $700, and no, I don't have a leak, and I didn't water my yard. So from a teacher's standpoint, I'm more concerned, actually, for my daughter who's here. I've got two kids who graduated from King George Counties. I think it's an excellent school system. But I am concerned, like the previous teacher said, being there every single day and seeing the shortages, seeing the frustration of my coworkers, seeing the level of "I want to quit" every single day. Money doesn't always help. It's certainly a nice thing to do, but even if we can get that money per capita per student, then maybe there's not 36 kids in one class. I don't, we don't have 36 yet, but I did have 34 this year. That's a lot of students. And we've already been told that if this budget is not approved, we will not get the teacher that was asked for, and we will have even more students next year. Yes, I teach PE, but I don't know if you've ever tried to raggle 35 10th graders in one space, playing with, you know, several different types of equipment. It becomes challenging. So you've heard it all before. I'm just one more person saying, please reconsider the budget and fully fund what Dr. Benson asked for.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, Mr. Dines, anyone online? Anybody have anything that they need to read in? Okay, then we will close out the public comment portion, and we will move on to reports of members of the board. Mrs. Bender?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. First off, I would like to appoint, everybody knows and those in the room, Sergeant Major and Frank, two of the Social Services Board. I think he'll be a good fit. And Mr. Miller has the information to send everybody. Frank sent it to me earlier this afternoon, so I couldn't distribute it out.
Second. We have a motion properly second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Chair votes aye. Motion passes. Thank you.
Next up, I want to thank all of the teachers and educators that came out and speak. I'm not going to make any formal comment on the budget at this time. I do appreciate you coming out and speaking. Several of my children had different teachers that are in the audience, and I was one of those long-term subs and a substitute and a coach in the school system for 19 years. So I do understand some of this, but I will wait till our public hearing to say anything. And I do encourage, if you guys would like to come out, anybody else would like to come out, any residents like to come out on May 17th for the public hearing on the school board budget, or to send me an email, or call me on the phone. I'd love to hear from you. Next up, I would like to point out all the budget work sessions. I'm not going to list them all, but we went into the last two meetings. And as some of you mentioned, you can see them online anytime. There's a lot of work that went into it. We have a lot of challenges in the next couple of years with the budget and funding projects. So that's what we've done. If you would like to see them, it's called King George County Official Content. You can see any meeting going back to January of 2020, or online. I also attended on Saturday a very wonderful event promoting STEM education, an innovation challenge at Dahlgren that was hosted by UMW, Mr. Nick Miner, who's in the audience, and Kim Wilson. They helped out. They did a wonderful job of helping keep the students. There were, hold on, 12 schools and 14 teams competing. Unfortunately, Nick, can you help me? Who won? Do you know who won? You know, I don't know. They didn't send me an email that said. I did have a lovely talk with one group of King George students. I tried to find all of them, but they were all busy trying out their robots, and I had a great conversation. It was nice to see kids that were really involved taking robots with Legos and trying to navigate a course that the Navy provided. And why this is important is, one of the speakers mentioned about the importance of the base, which you all know, but how operational challenges and using the Navy and the students to solve problems. And we, you know, we have to solve problems. We need engineering solutions, regular solutions. And some of these students, I don't think all of them were going to go into STEM, but they were really trying to solve the problem that they were being given, and they seemed very enthusiastic and very excited about it. And one of the things I was really impressed was the lady who came to speak, and she was amazing. She had worked her way up through some humble beginnings, and she works for the EPA, and her name was, hold on, I'm going to find it right here, Dr. Candy Hudson, who's a technical advisor at the EPA, and she was the 2021 Women of Color STEM Award recipient. And one of the things, I wanted to point out a couple of things she said. Never say no to opportunities. Don't be afraid of progress and solutions. Don't take lightly great responsibility, and don't give up on your journey and hope. And she was very inspiring to see, and she was going around to all the groups, encouraging them to do their best, and I thought it was a really nice event. And then on Sunday, I attended the VFW Nick Mason First Anniversary at Barnesfield Park, and that was a nice event. Unfortunately, I think it got cut short by the rain, but it was well-attended. And one thing I had mentioned to Chris Clark was about the parking there. There was a lot of people, but very little parking. So hopefully, in, when we look at the 166 acres, we can figure out a better parking scheme. And I also want to thank Chris Clark and his staff, because at Silston Elementary, in the parking lot, there is these little, there's cement barriers where you park, and the rebar was sticking out really high in the rebar, and my husband's car had a little caught on it and did some damage to the bumper. But I did call him because there was quite a few that were stuck out, and I was concerned for residents that might trip and fall and get hurt, and I hear that they've been fixed. So I want to thank Chris Clark and his staff for that. I really appreciate it that he got on that to make sure that our residents are taken care of, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Bender. Mr. Granger?
Yes, sir. Thank you. I'll start with Ms. Jensen Bay and Tiny Tang. I apologize if I misspoke your name. I appreciate you coming out to share your experiences and to speak about the Folandafa. Okay, so thank you for sharing that information and coming out and just helping us understand. I appreciate it. To everyone else, I'm not going to name by name because it's been a number, but thank you so much for coming out. I really do appreciate you coming out before the public hearing. Waiting until the public hearing is sometimes makes things very challenging, so I do appreciate that. This board has advertised a tax rate at 68 cents. Our current tax rate is 73 cents, which sounds like it is a tax cut. And from a tax rate, it is a cut, but due to the property values, if we were to set it at 68, it would realize a very significant amount of revenue increase. And we did that on the high end for the point of saying, "That's the highest we can go. That's the highest we're going to entertain." And then we'd work our way down from there, because, as many of you said, we don't know the state budget, and we don't, which makes it very difficult. So we went high on that. During the last meeting, we did discuss and put in a line item for the school funding, and that was my request or my suggestion. Originally, I was saying, "Let's look at a high watermark." And Mr. Collins made the comment saying, "Maybe bid it or start low," because it would probably always be more appreciated to have a number and then get more money than to have a number and get less money. So I was proposing that number as the low watermark. So I'm not sure if there was some confusion from everyone in regards to what we discussed, but that's what it's currently at, whether it's going to be fully funded or not. It is a big request, and it is difficult to know without what the state funding is going to be. So I'm not going to commit any action tonight to say it would be. It is. It's a lot of money. But like I said, I really do appreciate everyone coming out. I really do. Getting engaged as early as possible is always the best. I would encourage people to come out even earlier. We do have work sessions, and in the future, I would encourage, if you have the opportunity, I know there's a lot of them, but please, please feel free to attend those because they are public as well, and there's an opportunity to provide public comment at those as well. And as I said, we have a public hearing in two weeks about the budget. So again, please come out, and again, thank you for coming out tonight. So other than that, I would just like to say thank you to our staff for helping us prepare the budget on April 27th, as we got ready to actually have this public hearing in May. And then the last thing I have is on Friday, April 29th, I did attend the change of command for Captain Plu for NSWCCD. I'd like to say thank you to Captain Plu for all of his efforts and his involvement in our community. I really do appreciate what he's done, and to wish him best of luck in his next endeavors. And then to welcome Captain Milnarski, who is the new NSWCCD captain. So welcome to him as well. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Granger. Ms. Cupka.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to thank the two speakers from Fairfax County who joined us here this evening to speak to us about Folandafa. We appreciate you coming out again. I believe you came out around this time last year. Thank you very much for your outreach to our community. I want to thank everyone who came out this evening. I think out of all the speakers, there might just be one of you that I don't know personally, and that's whether a school board member, a teacher of my own children, a PTA president. Thanks for coming out. I'm just going to leave it at that.
Thank you. Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Had the opportunity to attend the Foreign Bureau Dinner the other night. Also had the opportunity to go to the budget work sessions. Also had the opportunity to go to the Dahlgren Heritage Museum Dinner. They were very nice, and the folks, I sent all y'alls well wishes for those folks, but not representing the board. So now let's get to what the public speakers have been here talking about. So I keep hearing, "Do we value the schools in King George?" And I can tell you that we do. I was on the school board for eight years. When I first got on the school board, the schools were not accredited. You get accreditation through leadership, not money. In the eight years that I was on the school board, all staff received a raise compensation every single year for the last eight years. This last year, before I left the school board, in March, we had a breakage of $850,000. Breakage, you know, that can be defined in many ways. They usually say it's They usually say it's the amount from not spent to spent. So that $850,000 was sent right back to the school staff, all the school staff. And it also raised bus driver salaries to make them competitive. It raised the parafessionals to make it competitive, and other folks that needed to have their, be a living wage. And I must say that, you know, when I listen and say we're underfunded, I think it all depends what that means. So I'll just give you some numbers. So this year, the state, the Senate budget, well, first, before I get into that, the conversation on teacher compensation and compensation for employees is not really a issue of your local board of supervisors. What it really is, the issue of, nobody wants to go into profession, because the reasons that all of y'all that are in the profession know. So we're not producing teachers. So at one point in this nation, we said, okay, college education is like the most important thing for you to do. So everybody focused on that. And then what happened? Then we found out that the plumber that comes to our house is going to charge us $250 an hour, and they get paid $100,000 a year. So now we've shifted on that, that these other skills are important. So let's go back to teachers. Until we get a national conversation, folks, about teacher compensation and the whole, the only reason why people go into teaching is not for that money at this point. We all know that. But until you get a wage where you have teachers who have a $50,000 loan, and then they have to pay it off through their salary, until you get the teachers at a wage where you can make it to where they can have a middle-class life at least. So, you know, when folks come to the board of supervisors in King George County and say, hey, you're not doing this, well, maybe you need to start going a little higher than King George Board of Supervisors. We only give you the money we have. We don't have it. We can't give it to you. And we have to take it from you to give it to you. But some other numbers, so the state, on both their budgets, Senate and House, this information is for y'alls conversation, not necessarily on Facebook, but your conversation between yourselves, and when you come back to the public hearing, you have more information where you can give us some more views. So the state, the House and the Senate, both of them are pretty much at $2 million for King George schools. There's another part of the construction for the Senate. None of that's been decided, but both of them are pretty steady on the $2 million for King George, which is more than King George has ever gotten from the state in a, that's an addition in a single year ever. Then the board of supervisors had discussed the $1.4 million for the schools additional. That's more than the board of supervisors has ever given the schools in a year. So I kind of, when we talk about underfunding, I don't necessarily think it's underfunding. You manage the money you had to do what you had to do. You're constantly getting raises, but are we going to be able to pay you $100,000 a year? You know, give the board, the school board, $100,000 a year for each teacher? I can tell you the answer is no at this time. So we have to work within what we have. I know that I will be probably beat up on Facebook, which is nothing unusual, but the facts are the facts. So we have a great, we have a great system here. We've had a great system for a long time. My children are a production of this county schools, and they're all doing very well, along with many of your, your Ms. Strauss's children, and so on and so forth. So just another number, so Virginia rates number 30. So I did some research myself. They rate number 30 on school funding, which is, you know, out of 51 states, almost half. But it's not, it's not really at the bottom of the list, not to say that's okay. When we talk about taxes and money, your board is very keenly aware of our problem with not having enough tax revenue. And I can tell you that they're working on that. We're working on that. That's all I can say about that. When we talk about the schools and maintenance and so forth and so on, there was $5.2 million in American Rescue that went to the schools the first time around. So I was hoping they would address some of those issues there. So when we talk about the salaries have been frozen, that's not really an accurate visit, and home visits have stopped. They haven't stopped. They stopped during COVID, obvious reasons. So I implore you all to continue the conversation, but also know that your board of supervisors, at least this one, I spent eight years on the school board supporting the schools. I continue to support the schools. When we, when we talk about the difference between the ask and the get, I think that you have to be reasonable in that. So I look forward to watching y'alls comments on Facebook tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. I just wanted to start out saying thank you for everyone coming out. Ms. Bay, Ms. Tang, thank you again for coming out and giving us an update on the Falandafa. Appreciate that. And everybody that came out in support of the schools, certainly appreciate y'all coming out. Like Mr. Granger said, you can certainly come to our budget meetings as well. That's kind of where all the work gets done, to where we come up with the numbers. It is a very fine balancing act, like you all know, about, you know, give and take on taxes and money and everything. But we will, we will do our best to try to, you know, get to get everything that everybody needs. And like we said, we're not making any decisions. It's just some numbers to throw out, and we will finalize things later on when we hear from Richmond. So just wanted to say thanks again for everybody coming out. April 26th, I had a really interesting tour of the Dahlgren Military Base, which I found I was pronouncing wrong again. It was the naval support activity Dahlgren, which I kept saying it was NSWCC, and I was corrected from Captain Copeland many times. Being here 27 years now, been on base lots of times, but they did take me to a lot of places on base that I had never been and never allowed to go. But I just wanted to say thank you for Captain Copeland and Jerome Hayes for setting that up. I also took a very interesting tour of the new 19th Space Defense Squadron, the Kraken, which was just stood up. And thank you very much for Colonel Smith, the commanding officer of that squadron. I had no idea that we had that going on right here in King George and Dahlgren. I mean, just absolutely fascinating what they do over there. Just blew me away. I am going to have Colonel Smith, I'm going to invite him to come in, do a speech here or a presentation to the board. I think some of, some of y'all have already been down there to see him, but I'd like to have him come up also to let the public know, well, what he can of what goes on down there in Space Command. 27th, we went to another budget work session, maybe one of our final ones. And that's all I have. And then moving on, on your desks, you all have a resolution to recognize May 13th as Falandafa Day. And just wanted to get everybody's opinion and consent, if we want to do that or not. I think they came last year, and we did not do that, I believe. But what is everybody's feeling this evening? If we want to go ahead and do that, or hold off on that again? Just get yours.
Mr. Chair, while I appreciate them coming out and providing public comment, I would note, they are not, they are not residents or citizens of our community. And typically, when we do consider these sorts of resolutions, it either comes directly from a board member who did so from someone else's request, or from a citizen of our community. So unfortunately, at this time, I am just not willing to go ahead with the resolution as presented tonight. Thank you.
Ms. Collins?
I would like to pass on this this evening.
Okay. Okay. All right, then there's just consensus. We will hold off on that for this year. Thank you. And thanks, thanks for coming out, ladies. We certainly appreciate it. Okay, closing out, members of, reports, members of the board. Do we have a motion on the consent agenda?
Move to adopt the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion properly second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes. Okay, moving on, constitutional officer report. I see none. Report of the county attorney, Mrs. Lackey.
On April 21st to the 23rd, I attended the Local Government Attorneys of Virginia Conference in Harrisonburg. It was a good conference. There was a lot of overview of legislative items that I'll be getting memos to staff about legislative updates. I was also elected as the Secretary of the LGA effective in September. And the other matter I wanted to mention was that we did advertise the proposed real estate tax rates, as we are required to by law. We did not advertise a personal property tax rate, because we're not obligated to if we're not raising the rate. But I did want to mention that, because there could, it could, as a matter of, you know, as a matter of transparency for the public, it could be advertised for the next meeting, but it's not legally required. So I wanted to bring that to the attention of the board.
All right, moving on to our public hearing. The King George County Board of Supervisors will now hold a public hearing that has been properly advertised to receive public input regarding the creation and/or membership in the Rappahannock Regional Industrial Facilities Authority. I'll first ask for a staff report, then I will open the floor for public comment. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker. In order to afford everyone an opportunity to speak, please state your name and address before you comment. Upon completion of the public comment, I will bring the matter back to the board for consideration. The board may or may not take action depending, tonight, depending on information received during the public comment. Mr. Miner.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the board. I'm going to give the board a quick rundown of what a REFA does not do. You've got, the board has received this presentation at least twice now. So I'm just going to go over some highlights. So what a REFA does not do, it does not require locality to participate or invest in a project. It does not tax or regulate. Creates a locality, it does not create locality liability or exposure, and it does not replace local EDAs. So part of the basics, it's created by two or more localities, at least two of which need to be counties or cities, to collaborate on development of regional industrial properties, and the locality sharing the cost and tax revenue using the REFA as the administrator. It was created in the Virginia Regional Industrial Facilities Act, Chapter 64, Title 15.2, Code of Virginia in 1997. It's created by concurrent ordinances to be filled with the Secretary of the Commonwealth, to be filed with the Secretary of the Commonwealth. Generally, two members from each locality serving four-year terms, and which may be So the board, I believe, is already aware, this was initiated by the Fredericksburg Regional Alliance after pursuing a Go Virginia grant. The city of Fredericksburg has already adopted the ordinance and completed their second reading. This one here tonight will be our second reading. I'm happy to take any questions from the board, answer any questions that may be in regards to the REFA this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miner. Any questions for Mr. Miner?
Yes, I do. Thank you. Is my understanding, there are three-member localities. Does that mean Stafford has, is not included in this anymore?
Stafford, Stafford did not take it to a vote, Ms. Bender.
Okay. Do they need to be struck from these documents, then, if they're not?
If I may, as drafted, it provides that as long as there's two members, then those will be the membership, and it leaves the door open for Stafford if, in the future, they do want to join. The, some of the drafting changes, they're fairly minor, but some of the drafting changes from the first read were discussed with the Stafford County Attorney's Office. So it's, those edits have been incorporated. So if they do want to join at a later date, they could.
All right. Thank you. My next question is, I noticed in this, it provides for an executive director and staff. So how much, with only two, does that cost to the county? Is there any cost at this time?
There is no cost at this time. The REFA will be, or the Regional Industrial Facility Authority will be operated and administered by the Fredericksburg Regional Alliance until there is a deal or a project that requires a deal that needs to be made. That executive director or the administration of the REFA from that time period will be handled by the two agreeing localities for whatever project or site they choose to pursue.
Okay. And is there a salary range of, what, something would that be?
I would imagine, Ms. Bender, that it would probably be somewhere in the range of whatever you would pay a local economic development director, or a regional economic development coordinator, or manager.
And then my last question is for clarification is, if, how is it decided? Do you share in the revenue if you bring in an industry?
Correct, correct. So you have to, there are no specifics to how you arrange the deal. You can negotiate that once you have a project, or you have a site in which you want to pursue using the REFA. So with a REFA, it doesn't just have to be localities. I believe you can also incorporate private companies into it as well. It can also have more than one locality in a deal. So it all depends on what it is that you're trying to pursue.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
You had asked, you had answered my question. I was just wondering about Stafford, but you, they hadn't gone on to it, so. Okay, do we have a motion? Oh, sorry. All right, public hearing. Okay, so we'll close that up, and we'll open the floor to public comment. Anybody here for public comment? Okay, seeing none. Anybody get any written statements or anything that were received? No? Mr. Dines, anyone online?
No.
Okay. Well, then I will close public comment. And now we'll bring it back to the board for a motion.
I move to adopt the ordinance to create the Rappahannock Regional Industrial Facilities Authority as presented.
Second.
We have a motion properly second. Any discussion? Having no discussion, all in favor, we'll run by a roll call.
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Miner. Presentations and reports, USDA RISE Grant MOU, Mr. Miner. Presentations and reports, USDA RISE Grant MOU, Mr. Minor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this evening, I will be presenting on the King George County Smart Ag Initiative. The Department of Economic Development Tourism will be pursuing the USDA RISE Grant. So the Department of Economic Development Tourism intends to apply for a $2 million USDA RISE Grant to establish a smart ag innovation center at the Ralph Bunch High School Auxiliary Building. So the five Ws, who, we will be pursuing this grant with Riot. They are a 501(c)(3) out of Raleigh, North Carolina, and obviously my department. The what, the USDA RISE Grant. There's $10 million available in funds. We intend to apply for 2 million. The grant is due May 19th at 11:59 PM. The why, to develop a smart ag entrepreneurship cluster centered around small greenhouse development and smart farm development and IOT, utilizing IOT technology. Then the where, the Ralph Bunch High School Auxiliary Building and its available fields. The current status of the building, so the overall condition, my personal opinion would say that it's good. The shop area in mezzanine is in good standing, the roll-up door still works, the cage storage for equipment, cage storage is still in good standing, and there's plenty of power to the building. So some of the recommended repairs that we'll be utilizing the grant dollars for, to rehab the classroom area here in the back or office space, there's also a hole in the roof there. There will need to be mold mitigation back there as well. The replacement and repair of the bathrooms, I already mentioned the hole in the roof, and then there's additional mold mitigation and cleanup that will need to be done in the back office space. So funding and who's this, who's this for? So we intend to use $1 million of this grant to retrofit the building. We intend to repair the HVAC, the plumbing, put in new well-inseptic, run commercial internet, repair the electric, repair, do mold mitigation, repaint, stand up greenhouses by computer equipment, the software that goes with it, the growing racks that go in the greenhouse. So our target audience for this are, are obviously the people who participate in the farmer's market, existing small and medium-sized vegetable farmers, young and new farmers, dog and R&amp;D employees, public and private entities interested in agritech and industry. So utilizing this innovation center to not just stand this up for the community, but use this to recruit new technology companies and folks who are interested in this type of industry. So the vision and the goal and long-term goals for this, create an agricultural technology cluster, create a community of entrepreneurs and small businesses centered around technology and agriculture, scalability, so create a pathway from selling goods at farmer's markets or at home to a commercial operation. Essentially, we already have a cluster here of greenhouses in the county. There already are people using greenhouses in the county. What makes us different is, is that we have a pathway to commercial ability. So the Hoody Group, the large greenhouse near the industrial park, already leases space to commercial, to commercial greenhouse growers. So if we can start the cluster or start the initiative in the community, there's the ability to scale that from, from your backyard to maybe a smaller or a little bit larger of a location somewhere else. And then if they really want to get serious about it, there's the ability to move into a larger greenhouse right there in the industrial park where they're already using IOT technology to grow. Then, then the next, the next goal would be to create collaboration space, create a space where entrepreneurs can share their business ideas, test them using the latest technology. One thing I didn't mention was what Riot specializes in is business coaching and startups. So what they're bringing to the table is not just that coaching, but access to a network of folks who are already in that space of agritech. So that's another reason why we really want to partner with them for this grant. So what I'm asking for, from a commitment from the county, is a signing of a memorandum of agreement, and then any 20% of the construction costs that go into retrofitting the building. So if we are running commercial internet, the county would need to put up 20% of that commercial internet cost for repairing the hole in the roof, 20% of the whole, 20% of repairing the hole in the roof. So in total, if we went after the, the $1 million, be about $200,000 obligated from the county. And that concludes my presentation for this.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Minor, thank you for your presentation. So are you, you're asking the total amount of the grant request, you have one slide that says $2 million on page three, but you just said $1 million. So then the local match is only $200,000.
Right.
So is the local match 20%?
I wrote that wrong up there, I apologize for that, ma'am. Yeah, so it'd only be 20, it would only be 20% of the construction cost.
Of the construction cost, not the other costs for the other million dollars?
So $100,000, it's probably closer to what we're going to be looking at.
Okay.
Hope I did that, I hope I said that math right.
Gotcha, I just didn't understand that, the difference between the $1 million and the $2 million and how much the match was. Thank you for clarifying that. So this is in the auxiliary building, which is not subject to the National Park Service covenants related to it being on the National Register of Historic Places, is my understanding?
That would be my understanding.
So we are able, for the most part, to do whatever we would like to do with this auxiliary building only because it's not subject to the National Park Service covenants, from my recollection of the nomination form that was approved. So the, for the $200,000, I'm sorry, for the total, for the rebuild, the million dollars, do you, where did you get that number from?
So this number, so $1 million is going to go directly towards staff and standing up the program. There's a million dollars available. So I do not have exact numbers. I'll be getting exact numbers from the county engineering department, and we'll also be walking that space this Thursday so they can actually get a harder look. So I have more accurate numbers by the end of the week. But right now, we're going to assume that we're going to apply for the max or utilize the rest of that grant that we can apply for, and then work down from there as we get more accurate information.
Okay, and so the, you're asking for an MOU tonight?
MOA.
What, what does that bind us to? What, what does that obligate us to? Like, let's say we, we get this grant, and you're talking right now about $200,000. What if the construction cost comes in higher? Would we need more local match, or how does that work?
I can't give an answer to that scenario, ma'am. But what the MOA is for, the USDA requires that we become in, we become, entered into a formal agreement, and that there's an understanding that we will perform our obligation to the grant, or what we're asking for in the grant. And that Riot will perform their obligation to the grant.
Okay, that's all the questions I have for right now. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Minor.
Ms. Bender.
Yes, one question I had, from my understanding, there'd be the use of the athletic fields, correct?
Correct. So the, the, the plan as of right now is to utilize the existing soccer fields for the greenhouse. There is space behind the building, closer to the historical building where we could stand up a greenhouse, there is space elsewhere towards the top of the hill that we could utilize for it. But the plan right now is to utilize the fields at the bottom.
Have you spoken to Mr. Clark? Because I do know that soccer teams do utilize those fields.
Yes, we have spoken to Mr. Clark, and while I did give him some heartburn, he was agreeable to the project.
Okay, and then another question I have concerning the building, I know we are doing a survey right now, I think Mr. Quisenberry probably is near, is still in the process of working on that, right, on Ralph Bunch?
Yes, ma'am, I believe the, one of the final engineering companies was able to get in there and do some assessments, so we should be getting some information from them soon.
So why I ask that is, is what is the deadline for this grant? Because I, I know from looking at other grants that you, you need to have that information to be able to submit with the grant, so you have concrete costs.
Correct. May 19th is what we're looking at.
May 19th, all right. And then, what was it, one other, I had another question. I'll stop right now, so remember the full question.
Ms. Granger.
So if the board were to move forward with this tonight, would we have to appropriate the $200,000 tonight?
I don't believe so, sir, but we would need to set it aside in the CIP.
CIP, that's my other question, is what, beside P would be my assumption, but just to verify, okay. Thank you.
Anyone else, Ms. Collins?
That was, that was my question, where the $200,000 coming from? Is there a reoccurring cost?
No reoccurring cost, o- other than the powers of the building and paying for the internet costs, water, but we'll be on well-inseptic.
So, this question is for Mr. Miller. So the, I haven't seen the CIP yet, so I don't know what's in it, this is in it?
So the typical process is the CIP is done after the operating budget is put in place, so this, this would be a project that we would obviously add to the CIP.
So if you're, if we're adding to the CIP, then we're not ready to move forward on it tonight? So you're already taking money from the CIP?
Mr. Chairman, may I, I, I'm sorry, Mr. Collins, I, but I, I want to point out, we did something similar with the roof when we received the $500,000 grant from the National Park Service for the roof for Ralph Bunch High School. We made sure that Ralph Bunch High School was in the CIP. It is in the CIP right now. It may not be for the full amount with this included, but Ralph Bunch High School does currently occur in our CIP, and the purposes were to facilitate the receipt of that $500,000. I also, if I may, could I ask Ms. Hahn to come forward? Because I had a question about, which Mr. Collins alluded to, as far as where might the funding source be for the match?
So we, I actually, this week, have sent out to all the department heads the requests for their CIP, to put together their CIP, and that to be returned to Mr. Miller and myself in the electronic version by June 3rd, close of business. And then at that point, Mr. Miller and I will get together, look at those, and get ready for our submission to the Planning Commission and then to the CIP work session. So I'm trying to get it sooner than later this year than it has been the past couple of years.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. My second question then is, I know we have a second tranche of ARPA funding coming through July 1st or shortly thereafter. I know we have committed some of that for the second phase of the broad, the regional broadband grant project. It looked to me, in reading the packet, we might need a little bit more based on the parking lot project coming in a little higher than what we were originally anticipating. But can you tell me, as of right now, because we know that best practice is to use the federal money for one-time expenses and not recurring expenses, and you previously informed us that we more than qualify to use the full amount for revenue replacement, which would make, would free up funding for us to use it other ways? So would there be availability in that balance? If, if we're not putting in the grant until May, we're probably not going to hear until October at least, and we get that federal money in July, we might have an opportunity to use that if needed.
And we could very well have some work sessions earlier before things go to the CIP, goes to the Planning Commission, and through the process to work through those ARPA funds. I've received an email, I believe it was last week, stating that we would, I would be getting instructions at least 30 days prior to one year from our last batch of money that we received. We received that funding on June 30th of 2021, so I should be hearing something from the feds by the 1st of June. And, but yes, we have committed 150,000 for the broadband project, and then during the budget work sessions, about 430,000 more that we have committed of the 2.6 million that we'll be receiving. And we have approximately 42,000 left out of the current year ARPA fund.
Thank you. And then, so if, if we were to be awarded this grant, Mr. Minor or someone from your department would still have to come back to the board to authorize, to have the board authorize acceptance of it, correct, to, to execute the paperwork?
These aren't federal funds, are they, though?
Yes, it's a USDA, or a, USDA rural development.
We cannot use federal dollars for the match.
So we can't use federal dollars, so that won't work?
Yes.
Thank you.
Did that answer your questions, Ms. Collins? Do you have further?
I have a little further. So last year, the, the board of supervisors mixed a bunch of school buses, and I'm sure that will be in the school CIP for catch-up, and this would be worth about one school bus. So I would, I would caution this particular one for now. That was it.
Ms. Granger.
Mr. Minor, so from an economic development perspective, what kind of return on investment could we anticipate over like maybe a five-year period?
So, sir, it is a four-year grant, and we do have measurables that we are projecting. We do, we do project some job creation, but this isn't going to be a massive job creator. We do project some business startups, but we don't project a ton of them. This is to basically start a cluster here in the community and hope that it has a ripple effect over a longer period of time. So we will be, we will be, we will be training cohorts, at least four cohorts, 12-week classes once a year. So we will be pushing people in the community through those classes and hoping that we get job creation and startups out of it. So to say that there's going to be a direct return on investment, that's hard to say right now, so.
Understood. I appreciate that, thank you.
Ms. Bender.
Yes, thank you very much. One of the things I wanted to point out is when I've gone to some conferences and spoke at the state level, one of the things to try to save rural land is getting young people the resources to be able to learn how to farm, and they don't have the money upfront for tractors and all these things. And this, this might be a way to help facilitate, and I know Virginia Tech is very big on this, is bringing people here to get some more help without having to spend a whole bunch of money for training, and then being able to maybe go and rent a farm and then it stays as farmland as instead of being developed into houses. And it seems very positive, especially with the younger set, millennials, Gen Z, who find a lot of interest in this sort of thing. So I think it's positive, and it also would be saving part of the building, you know, we can't save it all at the same time. This is a piece, you know, one piece of public, we did the roof, electric, and then this. You know, it's a way to, to slowly be able to, in this, could this bring in income also?
So, and my vision, ma'am, would be that the county, whether, whether it's through my department or through the EDA, that the greenhouses could be leased out to generate some revenue. Is that going to cover our power costs and our broadband costs? Probably not, but it will be able to generate some revenue to a certain extent.
But it's a way to invest in our citizens that might want an alternative occupation. And I think, if I remember right, it's called Longwood Farm. I visited there about three years ago, and they took an old farm, the lady was a graduate, I think it was Longwood, deeded it to the, to the college, and they have created something on a bigger scale like this, and they bring in a lot of colleges and high school students to learn about environmental matters, restoring the ecosystem, and farming. So I guess on a smaller scale, this could be comparable?
I would say that.
Thank you.
No, the question's, I like the idea. I also went to the Longwood thing, that that is a lot of, a lot of federal state grant money, and it wasn't straight-up taxpayers' dollars. This does make me a little bit nervous to put out a minimum of $200,000 and really not much, you know, return for the county. I, I like the idea and everything, that they were, I just had a lot of questions and, you know, about the construction cost, and my whole thing is that the cost and... whole thing is that the cost and what's it going to do, bring back to the county. So that it it makes me a little leery of of doing that right now. And, you know, unfortunately, you have to know this within the next two weeks to get some more information. So I'm not too sure about it. So you you're going to need us to agree to go and make a motion to get into this MOA, right? That's what you're trying to get to?
Correct, sir.
Okay, well, do we have a motion? Well, I see no motion, Mr. Miners?
Can I ask a question? Do you have a sample of what this MO MOA looks like or says MOU on here? But do we have a sample?
Yeah, so I've already provided the MOA to Ms. Lackey, and she's already reviewed it and provided a comment, but nobody has signed it until we have board approval.
So maybe that would be something we would want to look at? I mean, you've reviewed this, Ms. Lackey?
I have. It was my suggestion to frame it as an MOA instead of an MOU because it is binding, intended to be binding, subject to funding. So one of the changes that I inserted was subject to appropriations clause. But I'd be happy to circulate it.
So in other words, you said subject to appropriations. So then it it would be an agreement that would only be binding if we if he he brought us back the grant and we appropriated the funds?
Correct. You'd have you'd have a second action to accept the grant and to appropriate the local match.
Thank you.
What kind of impact does rejecting a fund or I'm sorry, a grant that you've been granted have down the road when when you apply for other grants? I'm just not familiar with that process enough to speak to.
I don't I don't know that that's necessarily my expertise, but I think the the intent of the MOA is to show that there is, you know, a sincere interest in accepting this grant if it's given. But if, you know, the terms of the grant aren't what you think they are, you know, if the grant terms change, if you get less money, it's not going to cover your costs. You can always walk away.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Collins?
But I don't disagree with the concept at all, but the money's got to come out of the CIP. And right now, you got the chief out there. He needs more. Sheriff's Office needs more. Schools need more in the CIP. So I think it wouldn't be prudent to jump on that.
Thank you.
Mr.? Are there any scenarios by which we can bring this back to you for the May 17 meeting, and you'll consider? I'm not, obviously, you guys can't tell me that you're going to vote yea or nay, but is there some something that's missing that you need to make a decision? I'm not, you know, you don't all have to tell me. I mean, if you want us to bring it back, we'll bring it back. There's some questions about some information. You want to see the MOA, you know. I think we just want to know, you know, this, we have met with some folks that that are, you know, a part of the of the Bunch Building, and and they indicated a very great amount of excitement for this kind of a project. And, you know, so it's it's a good opportunity. I understand the reluctance about that Mr. Collins indicated it's it's a terrible timing. That's all the more reasons why you should be considering your CIP at the same time you do your operating budget. But I think that has been always been the process of of waiting. So I understand that, and I I think that's a good a good point. But I guess the question is, is, you know, Mr. Miners, you know, got a pretty aggressive approach here on this, and it, to me, it could pay off. But if 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 tonight is the answer, no, that's fine. We'll accept it. We'll move on. But if if tonight is, hey, we need more information, we'd like to look at some more information, then I'd just like to ask that right now.
So you want me to go first, Mr. Chair? And my answer would be no, we don't have the $200,000 unless you have some other plan.
Anyone else?
I I would say I'd like to see the MOU and to know if Mr. Quisenberry will have any of the numbers from Ralph Bunch's report by that time.
I agree with Ms. Bender. I would like to hear some. I would like to see the MOA and also get confirmation on the projected construction numbers. Thank you.
I don't mind bringing more information back, but I'm going to be honest with you. I'll lean much more towards Mr. Collins' point of view and look at what our CIP is and the needs we have, and pulling 200,000 out of it. I'd like the project. I like I do. I would like to do it. I just don't know if I want to pull that much out of CIP in order to to meet that that request. But I'm willing to entertain my colleagues if they would like to see some information. Maybe there will be something. And I don't mind if it's brought back.
If we want to bring that information back, I like I said, I'm I agree with Mr. Granger and Mr. Collins, and I just think that it's it's I like the project. I like, I mean, I like the idea of it, but, you know, to fund that much money as a minimum, plus broadband, water, all that stuff, I think that's a lot of cost to the county and not a whole lot of return. But I do like the project. But if you all would like to see the MOA and get more information and bring it back on the 17th, I'm I'm fine with that.
And, Mr. Chair, that can be as simple as the MOA gets emailed to each of us and an email from County Engineering Department gets sent to us with the projected costs. And if if you're not inclined, or it's really just the two of us that really were leaning that way, and if we look at it and say, no, we we had our questions answered, there's no need to bring it back on the 17th, then maybe that's where it's at. But I I would like to see some of the background. I just feel like we don't have enough of the background information on this one to make a decision tonight. Thank you.
Okay, that'll be fine. Mr. Miller, if you could just get that information to just send it out to all of us, and we can go from there. All right. Thank you, Mr. Minor. 504, Department of Finance, execute a contract for consulting services for selection of new financial system. Ms. Pitts?
Hello?
Hello.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I'm here before you this evening in reference to the procurement of consulting services for the selection of a new financial management system. On October 19, 2021, the Board of Supervisors approved the initial phase for the procurement of a new financial management system using ARP funds. The remainder of the project was approved in the CIP budget on November 9, 2021. Procurement developed and issued an RFP soliciting proposals from qualified firms to consult on the procurement of the new financial management system and its successful transition and implementation. On March 22, 2022, proposals were received and evaluated by staff. The top-rated firms were then invited to interview on Thursday, April 14, 2022. Staff determined that Barry Dunn was the overall top-rated candidate. Their approach comprises of three phases, and your board packet was a cost proposal for the first and second phases of the project. The third phase of the project will be based on the hourly rates that are also provided in that cost proposal. Travel expenses will be billed as incurred. Phase one will conduct a needs assessment forged by fact-finding meetings with key stakeholders and the development of a work plan. Phase two will facilitate the development of a request for proposals, its issuance and evaluations of those proposals received to include demonstrations, scoring, and negotiations. And then phase three will facilitate implementation assistance to provide for the smooth transition to a new system. So with that, I would request that you authorize the county administrator to issue a notice of award and to execute an agreement with Barry Dunn for consultants consulting services related to the transition to the new financial management system in the amount of $97,500, subject to approval as deformed by the county attorney. With that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Pitts?
Mr. Chair, I don't have a question, but I'm abstaining. I'm so happy to see this because every time I see that system, I think of the movie War Games, because that's how old it is and what the screen looks like. So I think this is very important for our community to make sure that we have the proper technology in the 21st century, not 1984.
It's kind of like Asteroids was back in the day. Any other questions? Okay, do we have a motion?
I move to authorize the county administrator to issue a notice of award and to execute an agreement with Barry Dunn for consulting services related to the transition to a new financial management system in the amount of $97,500, subject to approval as deformed by the county attorney.
Second.
We have a motion properly seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
505, Department of Finance, King George Administration Complex Parking Lot Milling and Paving Project.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I'm Angela Turner, procurement specialist here before you this evening. I've been awarded a construction service agreement for the King George Administration Complex Parking Lot Milling and Paving Project. On October 19, 2021, the Board of Supervisors approved the King George Administration Complex Parking Lot Milling and Paving Project using ARP funds in the amount of $185,000. This included the installation of 300 feet of drain pipe, which have been completed at a cost of $20,900. There's a remaining balance in the project budget of $164,100. On April 21, 2022, bids were received and publicly open for the King George Administration Complex Parking Lot Milling and Paving Project. A total of three bids were received, and the bid tabulation is attached. A low bid basin amount of $241,705 was submitted by Finley Asphalt and Sealing LLC, doing business as Finley Asphalt and Concrete, which is over the remaining project budget by $77,605. The county staff have determined that Finley Finley Asphalt and Sealing LLC Concrete is qualified, responsible, and responsible contractor. The county staff recommends that the Board of Supervisors authorize the county administrator to transfer $77,605 from contingency to the CIP project line. Authorize the county administrator to issue a notice of award to Finley Asphalt and Sealing LLC, doing business as Finley Asphalt and Concrete, in the amount of $241,705, and authorize the county administrator to execute a construction service agreement with Finley Asphalt and Sealing, subject to approval as deformed by the county attorney.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Any questions? I just hate to put you on the spot, Mr. Muncy, but you want to come up right quick and just tell, you know, tell the rest of the board why the big increase? I just didn't want you to sit back there for nothing.
Back in, I guess, when this came up for the CIP, I had solicited several contractors to come in and give me a price to repave the parking lot, to mill it and repave also the striping and the fire lanes. The only response I got was from Finley at that time. Their price was $145,000 June 3 last year, 2021. Of course, we had put it out to bid, and again, Finley was the lowest, but of an increase of what, 77,000 and some change, I guess due to petroleum. And when they did the original bid, he was warning me then of the possible increase of, you know, petroleum. So unfortunately, I just, like everything else, we got caught in it. I'm seeing that, you know, day to day with my operations, electronics, pumps, everything, so plastics.
No, I think that. Anyone? Mr. Muncy? Okay, thank you.
Welcome. Thank you.
So do we have a motion?
Can we make this motion as just one motion for all three actions, or do we need to make them separate?
You could combine them into a single.
Okay. I move to authorize the county administrator to take the following actions: transfer $77,605 from contingency to the CIP project line. Second, issue a notice of award to Finley Asphalt and Sealing LLC, DBA Finley Asphalt and Concrete, in the amount of $241,705. Third, execute a construction service agreement with Finley Asphalt and Sealing LLC, DBA Finley Asphalt and Concrete, in the amount of $241,705, subject to approval as deformed by the county attorney.
Second.
We have a motion properly seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
I'm I'm abstaining because I wasn't involved in any of this before my time.
Okay. Here's make a note that he, Mr. Collins, is abstaining, and Chair votes aye, motion passes. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I just want to note for the record, I was also an aye. I was trying to get your attention because it looked like Mr. Collins wanted to discuss, but I didn't realize he was trying to abstain. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. 506, Department Economic Development Tourism Adoption of Tourism Strategic Plan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. May I approach the diocese and hand out an updated version of the tourism strategic plan, please? Thank you. So, sir, the the updated version you have is a correction that was requested by the board at a previous meeting. The one you had in your packet did not have that correction. Apologies for that. So the King George County Tourism Advisory Committee and the Department of Economic Development Tourism recommends that the Board of Supervisors take the following action action, adopt the Tourism Strategic Plan as presented. On December 1, 2021, the Tourism Advisor Committee's regularly scheduled meeting, the TAC, agreed with staff to present the Tourism Strategic Plan to the Board of Supervisors for approval and adoption. Department of Economic Development Tourism presented the Tourism Strategic Plan to the Board of Supervisors on December 21, 2021. The Board of Supervisors requested a joint work session with the Tourism Advisor Committee and the Department of Economic Development Tourism, which was held on January 26, 2022. The Board Board of Supervisors provided edits for the Tourism Strategic Plan, which have been completed by staff. Staff recommends that the Department of Economic Development Tourism recommends that the Board of Supervisors adopt the Tourism Strategic Plan as presented.
Any questions for Mr. Minor while we're breezing through this?
Mr. Chair, can I just? It's a one minor typographical edit, and I'm very sorry, Mr. Minor. I was reviewing the packet while out of town over the weekend. But on page 15, it's a typesetting issue. If you look under the acknowledgements, and it lists each member of the Board of Supervisors, I believe there should be a hard return between the word supervisor and then Annie Cupca, to be consistent with the formatting of all other supervisors' names. Every other supervisor has Kathy Bender, Shiloh District Supervisor. And it looks like either. Yeah, if if you can fit in a hard return there just for formatting purposes, that way each person's name is followed by James Monroe Supervisor.
Right.
James Madison Supervisor.
Right.
Yeah.
Yes.
And district, James Monroe District Supervisor.
Right.
Is what Mr. Collins should read, and then a hard return after that.
Right.
That's the only last minute thing that I didn't notice while going through it online. Thank you so much.
Nick, I have one question with, is there going to be an action plan based off of this to come?
So every year, we're going to lay out a financial plan, and then we don't have a specific action plan every year because things come up. We have, you know, funding is.
is, is different every year based on the TAC applications. But every year, we will have a financial plan and a budget put together to try to go after, to try to pursue and go after every, all the objectives laid out in the strategic plan.
And that'll be presented to the board?
Oh, and we also, yes, and we also intend to have an annual report that's laid out for the board at the end of, at the end of these, at the end of the year for the strategic plan. So what goals did we meet? How well did we meet them? Basically pointing at things we, either we missed the mark or we made the mark.
Because I would, I would think that would be important to see the, for the citizens to see how the tourism dollars are spent and the return for the use of the tourism dollars.
Mr. Chairman, motion? Make a motion to approve the adoption of the strategic, strategic tourism package plan. Can we try that again? To adopt the tourism strategic plan.
Could I ask for a friendly amendment? Ms. Cupka had brought up a couple of typographical concerns, and so
Corrections.
Yes, could, if you could amend your motion to include those fixes, just to say to incorporate the, the fixes, typographical fixes that Ms. Cupka provided during the presentation as presented. I, I think I'd be satisfied with that.
And to accept Ms. Cupka's edits.
As presented?
As presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion properly seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Minor. All right, discussion items. I don't see any. County administrators report. Mr. Miller?
It's a quick report. You've already taken care of the other one, so that's it. It's my report. Just say thank you very much for the time we spent on the budget together. We look forward to finishing it all up. I'll answer any questions if there's any, but that's it.
I think that's your quickest report yet.
Huh?
Your quickest report yet.
I, and I can stretch it out, too. I mean, you know me, I talk too much, so kidding you.
Well, I know it doesn't have anything to
Opportunity, Mr. Granger.
But I, Mr. Miller, as you brought up, you brought up the idea of having our budget discussion in concert with our CIP discussions. And so obviously, we can't do it this year. And I've always kind of, I'll be honest with you, kind of gone along with it because that's what we've done in the past. I don't know if there's any legal reason why we do it that way, but I'm willing to entertain that idea for the future and just to ask my colleagues to maybe consider and not make a decision today. Obviously, we have a whole budget year to figure it out if we want to move forward with that. But I think it's a fair idea to investigate, and I'm willing to entertain it.
We will definitely make some changes next year, and that's one of them, yes.
Do it all at once, that would be, I think, better. I said do it all at once. I think that would be a better idea. We have everything all together. Okay. Well, thank you. Do we have a motion?
Apologies. All right. I move that the King George County Board of Supervisors convene in closed meeting to discuss the potential acquisition of real property for the purpose of fire and rescue facilities pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A 3 and 6. These provisions permit discussion concerning considerations of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiation strategy of the public body, and discussion or consideration of the investment of public funds where competition or bargaining is involved, where, if made public initially, the financial interests of the government unit would be adversely affected. I invite the county administrator, county attorney, and fire chief because they are deemed necessary and/or their presence will reasonably aid at the board in its consideration of the topics to be discussed pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3712F.
Second.
We have a motion properly seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We're in closed session.
I move that the King George County Board of Supervisors return to public meeting and certify by vote that only public business matters lawfully exempt it from open meeting requirements by Virginia law, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered during the closed meeting.
Second.
All right, we have a motion properly seconded. We got a certify by vote, please?
So certify.
So certify.
So certify.
So certify.
Chair so certifies. We are back in open session. So we have a motion?
Move to adjourn until May 17th at 6:30 PM in the boardroom.
We're supposed to.
Sir?
Did I miss something? No motion in closed meeting?
Sorry, say it again.
No motion in closed meeting?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm
Totally sorry.
Okay, Rich. Ms. Cupka, go ahead.
I'm, I missed something there. Where, where are we at?
He made a motion. We're not seconding it, so another motion can be suggested.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I move to authorize the county attorney and the county administrator to draft a proposed sales agreement for acquisition of real property.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion properly seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes. Okay, how about another motion? Mr. Collins?
I will make the motion. I will make a motion to adjourn to our meeting on May 17th, 2022, at 6:30 PM in the boardroom.
Second.
We have a motion properly seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Now we're adjourned.